Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 14th meeting of the Anarundel County Council. We are now called to order. The purpose of this meeting is to hear testimony on the proposed FY26 County General and Board of Education budget. At this time, please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. And since I know that many of you realize that I am the vice chair and our chair would ordinarily be leading this meeting, she sends her apologies. She had something important come up. She's going to be just fine, but she said she promises that she will watch the videotape. And so I am here in her place tonight. All right, Ms. Fiedler will lead the invocation.
Thank you. Please stand. Please pray with me in a manner consistent with your faith as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. Heavenly Father, we gather here today, prepare to engage in this important public hearing. Grant us the ability to listen attentively to those who took the time out of their day to come testify here tonight. May we remember that behind every county investment is the hard work of our county residents as they work to provide for their families, including those here this evening. We pray that all who are present may leave with a sense of peace and purpose. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the budget bills for the benefit of the members of our public.
Bill number 3325, An ordinance concerning annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Anarundel County. Bill number 3425, an ordinance concerning tax levies, special community benefit districts, shore erosion control districts, and waterways improvement districts. Bill number 3525, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill number 3625, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill number 3725, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill number 3825, an ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill number 3925, an ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill number 4025, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill number 4125, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Village South at Walthappel Special Taxing District. Bill number 4225, an ordinance concerning finance taxation and budget, parking lot and garage tax. Bill number 4325, an ordinance concerning public works utilities, metered water and wastewater charges. Bill number 4425, an ordinance concerning public works, solid waste collection, solid waste service charge, solid waste landfill and facility delivery fees. Bill number 4525, an ordinance concerning public works utilities, water and wastewater, capital facility recoupment charge, capital facility connection charges. Bill number 4625, an ordinance concerning property tax and semi-annual payment service charge.
Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times. And we will start with a couple of individuals who are here to make brief statements about the budget. First, we will have Chris Trumbauer, our budget officer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the county council. For the record, I'm Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer for Anarundel County. Happy to be your opening act before the headliner, Dr. Bedell, comes up and speaks.[254.73][254.73](Laughter). I'm here to give a brief overview of County Executive Stuart Pittman's proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. The Budget Office approached this budget year with some caution due to a state expenditure shift of nearly $12 million and a highly unpredictable federal funding landscape. However, I'm pleased to report that the fiscal foundation of Anarundel County remains strong. This is reflected once again by receiving this year the Triple Crown credit ratings of AAA from the three major credit agencies, as well as our projections for ending another year with a healthy fund balance. Overall, current year revenue from the local income, property, and real estate taxes is projected to be a combined $41.9 million above original estimates. In addition, the county also continues to benefit from elevated investment income for its cash balances and reserves due to high interest rates. Looking ahead to fiscal year 26, we're projecting decreased growth for the local income tax revenue, while property tax and real estate tax revenue should remain generally consistent with the current year growth. This year's proposed general fund budget is $2,401,417,800, an increase of $89 million or about 3.8% compared to the adopted budget for fiscal year 2025. Adjusting for fund balance and one-time revenue yields a $111.5 million increase or 5.3%. The fiscal year 26 proposed budget is balanced; there is no structural deficit. All recurring expenses are being paid for with recurring revenues, and we are holding an additional $10 million in reserve as a contingency for federal funding impacts. There are no proposed changes to the local income tax rates; they are the same as the current year. The proposed property tax rate is 97.7 cents per $100 of assessed value, which is a .7 cent tax cut from the current rate of 98.3 cents. All other current tax rates remain unchanged with the exception of the local parking tax, which is increasing from 60 cents per 24 hours to $1 per 24 hours, the first increase since 1999. The responsible fiscal management of the past several years has allowed the county to continue critical investments in education, public safety, and important health and human services programs. For our school system, the budget includes $981.2 million of funding, which is a record $52 million increase from last year. In addition, the state shifted $9.3 million of public education costs to the county, so the total amount of new funding is more than $61 million. This is a significant investment and supports many key outcomes. The proposed budget funds the compensation package recommended by the school superintendent, which includes a 3% cost-of-living adjustment and step movements for all units. It funds 63 new positions, including 28 in special ed, 14 community school program managers, 10 English language assistant acquisition teachers, two bilingual facilitators, and 11 social-emotional learning positions. The budget also meets all blueprint requirements, expands the middle school athletics program, and funds a non-invasive weapons detection pilot program. For public safety, the proposed budget provides funding to add a full shift to the police department's innovative real-time information center. We are also adding five new positions for the fire training academy, which will allow the department to run two classes per year and keep field staff in the field and reduce overtime costs. The budget proposes two new civilian communication operators for the sheriff's office, which will free up sworn deputies for courtroom security and other tasks. And the Office of Emergency Management is creating a new deputy director position for 911 operations. For Health and Human Services, the proposed budget transitions several successful initiatives started with federal recovery funding over to recurring county general funds. These include the Healthy Communities Program, the Health Ambassador Program, the Violent Interruption Program, and Expanded Crisis Response and funding for the Anarundel County Food Bank. The proposed budget also supports a new Child Enrichment Center for childcare at Van Bocklen Elementary School and provides $1.5 million of general fund support to the Anarundel County Food Bank. The proposed budget fully funds our annual pension and retiree healthcare contributions and continues the county's policy of maximizing our contribution to the Revenue Reserve Fund or the Rainy Day Fund. That's 8% of the forecasted operating revenues. The county successfully negotiated with all seven bargaining units that needed new agreements. The proposed budget also includes a 3% cost-of-living adjustment for non-represented employees and the same for contractual workers. The proposed budget also supports our vibrant library system and world-class Anarundel Community College with new funding of $2.5 million and $1.2 million respectively. Proposed county utility rates have modest increases consistent with the program adopted in the current budget year. The annual trash and recycling fee is proposed to be $426, up $22 or 5.4% from this year's rate. Water and sewer rates are proposed at $3.65 and $6.42 per 1,000 gallons respectively. These are increases of 6%, or 20 cents for water rates and 36 cents for sewer rates. The average annual bill for a residential water and sewer customer is estimated to be $954, which remains among the lowest in our region. The county stormwater fee will remain unchanged. In addition to the operating budget, the six-year capital improvement program is before the county council now. The proposed capital budget is well within all county debt affordability guidelines and is nearly $10 million under our affordability limit for the cumulative six-year program. The capital budget provides full funding for all current school construction programs and maximizes state grant funding opportunities. There are 13 new capital projects in the general fund. These include three in our Parks class, Severn Danza Expansion, the South River Farm Park repairs and improvements, and field improvements for Arden and Waterberry Parks. We are also funding improvements to the I-97 between Route 50 and Route 32, and the budget includes out-year funding for a new Ruth Parker Easton Specialty School in Millersville. I will also note that the county is undertaking several projects in partnership with other entities. The most notable of these are shifting the construction of the Edgewater Community and Recreation Center to be managed by the Resilience Authority and co-locating a new Millersville library at a YMCA facility. These partnerships will allow us to build these projects faster and cheaper than our traditional CIP process. In closing, I thank you for this opportunity to present a budget overview tonight. The county executive and the entire budget team look forward to working with the county council and the auditor's office as we work to strike a budget to meet the priority needs of our county residents. Copies of the entire budget, including budget highlights, are available on the Budget Office website at www.aacounty.org. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trumbauer. And next, I would like to invite Dr. Mark Bedell, Superintendent of Anarundel County Public Schools, to give remarks on behalf of the school system.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the county council. What do I have, two minutes? Oh, really? Okay, I'll take about five. Thank you.[695.62][695.62](Laughter). So, listen, this is an honor to be here today. I just finished speaking at Charting Careers. I was just keynoteing there and had to run out to get here. Yeah, I don't know where to start. Like, I feel so good about where we are as a school district right now. The unprecedented support that we have received from this county council and from the county executive and his staff is something that has really put us in a position. And I think it's important for everybody here to just hear a few of these things. Next week, we will give our first State of the Schools breakfast where we will really highlight some of the good news, but there's a lot. We are the most sought-after school district in the DMV because of your funding. We are a school district that just received its SAT scores for all of our 11th graders, and I want to share this with you. 25 points higher than other MSDE schools in the state, 17 points higher than all other Maryland schools, that includes private schools, 15 points higher than all US schools, and 14 points higher than all other global test takers. That's because we are able to fully fund all of our 9th, 10th, and 11th graders taking the pre-SAT, so by the time they take the actual SAT, you're getting this type of unprecedented data. And I'm here to tell you as a proud superintendent that we are ahead of the schedule. We have won 18 state championships already, which is just unbelievable, and we right now have a number of our athletic teams that are right now competing in field sports, getting ready to win more. So this money makes a huge difference. New reading curriculum, new math curriculum, enrollment has increased by nearly 700 students. We want to enhance other extracurricular opportunity and experiences, and you will hear about that from some of our students. I'm a big ag guy because I supervise ag schools in two different school districts, and I think it's a goldmine that has gone untapped here in Anarundel County. This budget helps to begin to support giving our students more support in that area. But most importantly, we are able to better staff this school district. People are knocking down the door wanting to work. We had one of the highest-ever-attended job fairs at Severna Park about three or four weeks ago, while other school districts are laying off people, not Anarundel County. We're getting the support. We've closed gaps on the wage disparities from day one. You all supported an 8% total increase in my first year, 5% last year, another proposed 5%. 18% is huge, and that doesn't count what you all did the year before I got here, which was another 8%. So we are beginning to close gaps, and it's going to help us with retention, it's going to help us with recruitment of our educators. Again, none of this is possible if we don't have the support that we're getting from you all. And I'll close out by saying this. I spoke to Prince George's County Superintendent today, I spoke to Hartford County Superintendent today, I spoke to Baltimore County Superintendent. They all asked, "How are things going with your budget?" And I said, "You know, right now, things are looking really good." I said, "I don't really have any reason to be in fear that things are going to get cut because we've also been able to show this county council and the county executive that your return on investment is playing out on so many different fronts, and I have all of the receipts. So those of you who will come to the State of the Schools next week, you'll get a chance to see how it's playing out." But I told them, and I told my team this, I'm a Buffalo Bills fan, right? I'm a New York Knicks fan. That's why I'm trying to hurry up so I can get home and watch this last game. But I will take this from the Ravens when he says, "Who has it better than us? Nobody." And I really believe that because of the support from you all. Thank you all for considering the budget that we have proposed.[947.29][947.29](Applause).
Thank you very much, Dr. Bedell. Next, I would like to invite our CEO of the Anarundel County Public Library System, Skip Old.
Thank you, Madam Chair, council members. As Dr. Bedell knows, I'm also a lifetime Buffalo Bills fan.[975.56][975.56](Laughter). On the other hand, one of the main stars of the Golden State Warriors went to my college, Davidson College, so I hope the Knicks and the Warriors can face off. It's getting tough on the Warriors this year. Okay, well, you know from our meeting a couple of days ago pretty much what I'm asking you to see if you can fund. We have about a dozen or so supplemental budget requests, and there's a couple of things that I talked with you about the other day. By the way, I wanted to mention, when I saw you, I wasn't all bandaged up. I did want to say about that, that I've been fighting with people trying to ban books, and so (Laughter) anyway, trying to keep things going here. All right. So, Chair Rodvian, council members and residents, I want to talk about some of the great capital projects happening. Before I do that, I want to say that we really appreciate the county executive's proposal for cost-of-living and merit increases. He has proposed 3% cost-of-living and 3% merit for all library employees, so that's tremendous, especially on top of the pay increases over the previous few years. Also, you all funded over the, let's say, the last two to three years, pay increases above and beyond COLA and merit that were in the range of $2 million extra to our base budget. So those market adjustments, they didn't make us the best-paid library system in the state, but they did get us to be at parity with our peer library systems. And then with that, in conjunction with COLA and merits that are ongoing, that's just tremendous. So thank you very much for that. I want to mention that the Discovery's Library is expanding by 3,000 square feet. The work is underway right now. That's tremendous. We also were able to add a couple of positions to Discovery's library, so that has been one of the most successful projects that I've seen in my lifetime, frankly. I was looking at the statistics for fiscal year '23, and, well, first of all, Discovery's Library is doing more kindergarten readiness programs than any other library in Anarundel. More people are attending than at any other library in Anarundel. And in terms of comparison with the 23 other public library systems in the state, we are number one in overall children's programs as well as number one in attendance, and that's by far. So that's been a great thing. In terms of our overall program attendance and number of programs for adults, teens, children, everyone, we're not quite number one. I think we're number two or three in those areas. But that's a testament to our staff. They are dedicated, they get out, not only do the programs in the libraries, but get out into the community, so that's just a tremendous thing. The second thing, Mr. Trumbauer mentioned, the Y of Central Maryland. We have this project that came out of the blue in a way to me, because we've had the Millersville Project on the books. It's been funded in the, it's not funded, it's been in the capital plan in year five or six. But now with this partnership, the letter of intent was signed between the county and the Y, and this looks like it's going to move forward. It could move as quickly as the Glenn Burney Library Project, which we expect to open most likely in 2028. Glenn Burney is well underway, being designed. We had a tremendous community meeting. I know Councilwoman Pickard talked about that the other day, and it was just a very moving meeting that we had. Lots of community input gathered on that. Two other items, Mountain Road Library, we are moving ahead trying to find a spot for that, and I frankly wasn't aware when Mr. Volkey was talking about the libraries or the county-owned property right there, but it's that Lakeshore Athletic Complex. We're going to be looking at that very closely and see if we can get that site identified and figure out if we can place a library there, so that is great. And the last thing I want to say is that the Brooklyn Park Library Project is being proposed for funding in this year's budget, and that is a $4 million project. It'll do just great things for that community, which has been so deserving for so long. With that, I will end, and thank you all so much. We appreciate all that you do. Thank you.[1266.42][1266.42](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Old. And then our final special speaker, well, everyone here is special, of course, but that got a special slot is Mr. Jorge Cordoba. Is he? Oh, there he is. I was looking around and didn't see you. Come on up. We're glad you're here.
Good evening, Chairperson Rodvian and members of the county council. I'm Jorge Cordoba, resident of District 4, a proud father of two AACPS students, and vice president of the Teachers Association of Anarundel County. The budget before you this year overall is one of our union is generally happy with. We are encouraged that regardless of what is happening at the state and national level, county executive Pittman has continued to prioritize public servants and public services. I'm here today to ask you to ensure funding continues for and is expanded upon three areas: sustaining the public education profession by increasing the total number of special education positions funded, retaining dedicated staff by fully funding both Dr. Bedell's and Board of Education's compensation requests, and protecting our communities through targeted funding in the county executive budget. Sustaining means taking actions to keep the staff we have so our students don't face a revolving door of trusted adults. Dr. Bedell has proven his ability to replenish our bench of staff so that when he requested 155 special education positions, he could be confident that he would fill those vacancies. Isn't that right, Dr. Bedell? All right, thank you.[1374.83][1374.83](Laughter). Our growing population of students, in addition to the demands he told us, our growing population of students, in addition to the demands of state and federal legislation, require us to meet the moment. 28 additional positions, less than 20% of what was requested, does not meet the moment. Let me be clear, not all 155 special education positions will be classroom teachers, but staff across the spectrum of students we serve, from birth to 21 years old. 28 positions are IP facilitators, folks who help support special education students so they can be supported throughout their education. Five positions are occupational therapists, and six are speech-language pathologies, folks who are likely to make more money in private practice but choose to support our students and school. Yes, 105 positions were requested for teachers and teachers' assistants. We're asking you to expand the number of positions funded by the county executive because, as some of you heard at our town hall earlier this year, our teachers' assistants make it possible for our students to truly belong, grow, and succeed. Please prioritize funding additional special education positions in this budget. Retaining means we must go beyond maintaining in order to make choosing to become a public school educator a career path for aspiring and veteran educators alike. We need to pay master's degree-holding professionals a wage they deserve. Dr. Bedell's proposal, as funded by the county executive, includes a 3% cost-of-living increase and a step for all eligible staff. This is a positive step in light of budgetary concerns. However, what goes unfunded are three proposals made by the Board of Education. The mid-year 1% COLA requested by the Board of Education, which would offset our rising health insurance costs. In a school district that has claimed some of the best benefits, when the costs go up, we continue to fall behind surrounding counties. Additionally, last year and for many years, we have advocated to include the school counselors on the career ladder to receive the same salary enhancements as their counterparts in the classroom. Last year, the county council said they would found this line item if the Board of Education requested it. This year, the Board of Education has requested just under $100,000 and is currently unfunded. Finally, the Board of Education also requested a $1,000 incentive for staff who have reached their 30th year with AACPS to delay their retirement and stay with the county. This appreciation and valuing of the institutional knowledge, experience, and dedication of these essential staff is shown through this salary enhancement. Together, we retain by providing a liable wage for educators and their family, and we sustain this profession by ensuring our staff have a healthy work-life balance. Please make sure our profession is able to retain current and future generation of educators by funding and expanding the county executive budget requests. Finally, protecting our people. The theme of this year's budget means to us that our students, whether they are in our classrooms or on the school bus or in their communities, have the opportunities they deserve to become lifelong learners. Protecting our students means funding fair, affordable housing for all families regardless of their zip code. Protecting our students means funding the Family Protection Initiative so that if a child's parents are detained or deported while they are at school, our students and their families have the resources they need to continue being successful. We do recognize the need for having some reserves in the Rainy Day Fund in case of an economic downturn and funds to bridge the gap due to the loss of federal funds that traditionally have supported our most vulnerable communities. Because the current administration is taking actions that hurt our neighbors here in Anarundel County, we are forced to put millions of dollars in reserve that could be used to strengthen our school system, support our students with healthy meals, special education staff, and more. Protecting our students means fully funding the AACPS budget because educator working conditions are student learning conditions. On behalf of our union, please fund and increase the budget for Anarundel County Public Schools to sustain, retain, and protect our future and show that our students are worth the investment. Thank you. Good evening.[1660.88][1660.88](Applause).
Thank you very much, Mr. Cordoba. We will now open our public hearing on the proposed FY26 budget. We will call individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When your name is called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. And actually, we'll be calling six folks at a time, so you can take any of these six seats that are right in front of me, and our Madam Secretary will help you with the microphones. So the first six that I have on my list are Leah Paley from the Anarundel County Food Bank, Brian Dag from the Anarundel County Food Bank, Sue Young, I'm sorry, I need my glasses, Jeremiah Batucan, Sabrina Rosvey, and Reverend Lauren Blum. Go ahead, Ms. Paley.
Great. Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide testimony. My name is Leah Paley. I am the CEO of the Anarundel County Food Bank, which is located at 120 Crownsville Road in Crownsville. I wanted to say how grateful the Anarundel County Food Bank is to the county for your longstanding support and respectfully request that you leave intact the $2.131,892 million in financial support for the Anarundel County Food Bank that's currently included in the FY26 budget. Thanks in large part to the county government. Last year, in collaboration with our network partners, we distributed 4.1 million pounds of food and essentials at no cost to our neighbors experiencing food insecurity, and that included more than 1.3 million pounds combined of fresh produce and lean proteins. Currently, the food bank's averaging more than 48,000 instances of assistance across our network, and so far this year, we've distributed 3.2 million pounds of food to our network, all for free. 60% of that, that's just over 1.8 million pounds, were purchased by the food bank, and purchasing food ensures that we are able to provide our under-resourced neighbors with more nutritious food than relying just on food with more nutritious food than relying just on food donations. Without these resources, we will face difficult choices of reducing services, which will decrease the resources that we're able to provide to our 77 network partners. The outcomes of this would be catastrophic for the neighbors that we serve, who have already been heavily burdened by increased costs and the potential for widespread cuts to social programs they depend upon to make ends meet. This year has brought unprecedented challenges to the food bank and the neighbors we serve. Cuts to USDA's Emergency Food Assistance Program have left us scrambling to close a $250,000 gap. And with reductions to SNAP looming and food prices rising, continued funding from the county is even more important than ever to help us maintain services and meet the growing demand. So I urge you to leave intact the funding for the food bank in the FY26 budget so that our network can continue to distribute nutritious food. Thank you very much.
Mr. Degg.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Good evening, distinguished council members. My name is Brian Degg. I am a resident of District 7, whoop whoop, and I'm the board chair of the Anarundel County Food Bank. I've been blessed to be a part of this organization for the past seven years. I've spoke before this body before, and I've given my story of why I've gotten involved, but why I stay involved is the work. And it's amazing, in a county the size of ours, the need, Leah spoke to the vast need and the service that we provide. But we recently, we have a mobile pantry. Many of you may see it going down the road. It's the grasshopper. It pulls in, it lowers a ramp, and enables our neighbors less fortunate and who need our service to come in with dignity and shop for items that they want. And I've had the honor of volunteering on that. And the joy and the ability for them to choose what is, for them, a need, things like fresh produce, educating people on how to eat a kiwi, right? Like, is this good? I'm like, it's delicious. You're gonna love it. Take 12 of those. It's such an honor to be affiliated with it. Leah spoke to the great need. The ask frankly is that you keep in the budget the $2,138,92, which is desperately needed. There's a lot of uncertainty, not only with our organization but with many, and with the people in this county who rely on our services, who rely on the work that we do. We just want to make sure that we can continue doing the great work that our team continues to do. So thank you for your previous support. Thank you for your ongoing support, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm Sue Young, NBCT School Counselor at Belvedere Elementary and a District 5 resident. As a mother of also four sons who grew up in our public schools, three of whom are now living and working and contributing in Anarundel County, I am deeply committed to our students' success and well-being. Tonight, I call upon you to fund the NBCT School Counselors, a request we pursued for years. With the full support of the AACPS Board of Education, now is the time to act. The Board of Education voted unanimously 8-0 to include NBCT counselors as eligible employees because they are also tired of waiting for the state to do the right thing. We are now asking you to restore and fund the $87,000 that is needed at this time. Our current combined caseload includes 3,689 students, representing families across this entire county. The total request, 87K, is a small investment with a very significant impact. Student mental health needs are rising, and NBCT-certified counselors bring advanced strategies for academic, social, emotional, and career success. Maryland law requires 80% of our time to directly support students in these areas. We recognize budget constraints, but investing in highly qualified counselors strengthens all schools and all communities. In March, one of us, Danielle Crankfield, was honored as the Maryland School Counselor of the Year, proof of the excellence and expertise we bring. I urge you to invest in the eight NBCA-ACPS school counselors just as we invest daily in the 3,689 students and families we serve. Despite meeting rigorous national standards, we remain excluded, while other Maryland counties are advancing to recognize and include their NBCT school counselors. If you believe in strengthening student mental health, attracting and retaining top-tier school counselor educators, and advancing career and technical education, then supporting an amendment, creating one, to restore $87,000 in the budget is the right choice. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Batukan. Did I get it?
Very close. Well, thank you so much, Vice Chair and distinguished council members. My name is Jeremiah Batukan. So it happens all the time. And I proudly serve on the Board of Directors for the Anarundel County Food Bank, and I'm here to also respectfully ask for you all to leave intact the budget and funding for the food bank. You all have been a fantastic partner in our board meetings. We talk about the support we get from the county, and we're asking for you all to continue that mission in helping us feed our fellow citizens, our friends, our neighbors in this county. So Brian talked about his why. My time in the Board has been the last two years, but my family, I was a single mother raising four kids, and we ate a lot. So I picked up turkeys behind Central Middle for Thanksgiving when we didn't have food or money for food. I've been part of the free lunch and the free breakfast at schools and have seen the need in my own home and with a lot of kids I went to school with at Annapolis High School. So it's very personal to me. During COVID, it was 2020. It was 95 degrees, and we had to wear masks to unload food trucks at Tyler Heights Elementary School. But when you saw the line go from Tyler Heights, wrap around that entire block, go all the way to Forest Drive, where the police actually had to come on those weekends to help make sure traffic wasn't being blocked on Forest Drive, we saw the need was very great. I'm still part of that group chat. That group is actually now facing funding, so they can no longer do it themselves. That's why the mission of the food bank is so important, because they help support those food networks. Sarah Daniels Larson, who's part of Tyler Heights, says, "We're coming on a very big anniversary. A little community had a major milestone today. I'm so proud and how to share. A group of moms went all the way to Elkridge, to a food distributor, to ask for fresh food donations all by themselves. They drove farther alone than they ever have. They tried out their English skills, advocated for their community, and look at the results." And you obviously can't see it, but it's full of mangoes and fresh fruit. And I've been in the donation lines at the food bank. We love the donations, but a lot of times it's snack food, it's chips, it's things that don't have a lot of substance. And so, as Leah mentioned, that $3 million, it's a lot of its fresh food, and we need to buy that. So thank you all for the support, and thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Next, we've got Ms. Rosvi.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina Rosvi, and I'm speaking on behalf of Anarundel Library Workers United. In 2023, we began organizing a union in the Anarundel County Public Library System. After passing enabling legislation last year, we spent nearly a year at the bargaining table. We've made real progress, and we're close to a contract. Tonight, I'm asking for your support as we reach the finish line. I'm a library associate at the Severn Branch, and I love what I do. Every day, I serve a diverse community. I believe in our library's commitment to equity, but that commitment must be reflected in policy. A public library without equity is a contradiction. That's why one of the final issues we're fighting for is a strong anti-discrimination clause. This provision would do two essential things. One, affirm that both union and management reject discrimination in any form. Two, provide a clear, fair process for addressing discrimination when it happens, something especially crucial as federal protections grow more uncertain by the day. This isn't theoretical. Some coworkers have experienced discrimination and found no clear recourse. In today's climate, leaving this out doesn't feel like an oversight. It feels like a statement. We've made progress on key issues like scheduling and safety, but we cannot settle a contract that leaves workers unprotected. We ask for your support to finish this process strong as we work through these remaining items and reach a final agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And last in this group, Reverend Lauren Bloom.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to appear this evening. I am Lauren Bloom. I am the rector at St. Luke's Episcopal Church, 1101 Bay Ridge Avenue in Eastport. Our food pantry is one of the partner organizations of the food bank, and I'm here this evening to speak in favor of full funding for the food bank in the year ahead. You already have my written testimony, but I do want to make a couple of additional points. First, we are a small food pantry, and we are very grateful that the food bank allows us to distribute over $17,000 worth of essential food items to our visitors each month. We're also a small church. I can confidently state that if those resources were not available to us, we could not raise the money to replace them. So our visitors are very much dependent on the bounty of the food bank, and we are so grateful that that bounty is made available to us so that we can share it with our visitors each week. Second, our visitors really need this food, as do those, I'm sure, at the other partner organizations. Frankly, times are tough, and the economy is striking people very unevenly. So this is a place, recognizing that there are many valuable and worthy causes funded by the county budget, but this is a place where any money that is spent goes directly to benefit the citizens of Anarundel County and particularly children. We see a lot of children at our food pantry, so many, in fact, that we have been designated as a special needs food pantry because about a third of our visitors are kids, and they're hungry. So we are so grateful, and it's important that we be able to continue to step up and serve our visitors and their families. We're getting as many as 100 households a week, and these folks are going to go hungry if we're not able to provide for them. Now that said, we are simply speaking to the one line item in the budget that goes directly to our particular ministry. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. This panel is dismissed. I will call up the next seven, excuse me, next six individuals, starting with number seven on my list. Stacy Schofield, Connie Harold, Holly Clyderline, Ryan Morris, Josh Seifried, and Sam Moreland. And Stacy, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
All right. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to speak with you this evening on behalf of the case programs at Southern High School, Cat North, and the Phoenix Academy. My name is Stacy Schofield, and I am a parent at Southern High School, of a Southern High School case student, as well as the librarian at Mills Perole Elementary. I am here to formally request that our program receive the recommended $70,000 that is up for discussion. As a parent of a former student and a current student in the case program, I cannot begin to tell you how transformative this program has been for my sons and for our whole family. This program has given my sons direction, purpose, and experiences that they otherwise would not have had. As a parent, I've been able to chaperone our young leaders to various workshops, the State FFA Convention, and the National FFA Convention, where our students participated in competitions, won national awards, and presented in workshops. One of our former students is now a member of the Maryland FFA executive team. It is through the coursework and experiences in the case program that has made these accomplishments possible. As a teacher in a Title I elementary school, I've been fortunate to learn along with my sons and their peers through my involvement as the parent and chaperone. I have been able to take what I have learned and use this knowledge with my students pre-K through 5th grade. We are learning about agriculture, world and local sustainability, and how to become urban farmers in our food desert in Annapolis. Agriculture is in every part of the new reading program in our elementary-grade levels. My students deserve the opportunity to be a part of this amazing program, not just those in the Southern or Cat North clusters or at Phoenix. This won't be possible in the future if we cannot sustain the program we have now without the funding from this council. We tirelessly fundraise, rely on alumni donations, and skimp wherever we can. This shouldn't be the norm. With your funding of our line item request, we can expand the case program and continue to cultivate leaders in our learning, agriculture, and neighboring communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Connie Harold.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the Anarundel County Food Bank and the $2,131,892 currently included for it in the proposed FY2026 budget. I'm Connie Harold, a member of St. Luke's Episcopal Church in Eastport, whose weekly food pantry is one of the food bank's 76 network partners. Food insecurity can happen at any time to anyone. There was a person employed as a development director at a public television station who became disabled overnight. This person had a mortgage, a car loan, and suddenly no income. She applied for disability benefits and waited, using up savings and selling whatever she could to stay afloat. Her son, just back from a stint from the Marines, scrambled to help, but the bills piled up. As a specter of homelessness loomed, malnutrition made her newly diagnosed disease, multiple sclerosis, more debilitating. Putting aside her pride, she went to the food pantry and asked for help. That person was me, and the food provided and the assurance that it would be there until I no longer needed it helped me to have faith that I was not a loser and could and would survive until the disability payments kicked in. I am partially blind and can't see you very well, but what I can see is that you are good stewards of our public funds. So is the Anarundel County Food Bank, and I urge you to fully fund it at $2,131,892 for FY2026. Because it's not a handout, it's a hand up. Thank you.
Next, we have Holly Clyderline.
Good evening, Chair Hummer, who unfortunately is not here, Vice Chair Rodbien, and council members. My name is Holly Clyderline. I'm a resident of District 4 and a school counselor at Oak Hill Elementary in District 5. I'm here to advocate for the restoration of the budget line to provide eight school counselors, who are National Board-certified teachers, the same salary enhancement as their peers. I'm asking for an amendment to the budget of $87,000. We are the only mental health professionals that have our own National Board certification standards, and the process is the most rigorous professional development I've experienced in 25 years. So who are the eight school counselors who are getting left behind? One is a past Maryland School Counselor of the Year, the only school counselor NBCT at a community school, District 1. One is the current Maryland School Counselor of the Year, District 7. One is the only school counselor NBCT working with career and technical education students at Cat North, District 2. As a side note, staff who have their certification in CTE are receiving the salary enhancement, but the only counselor working with all CTE students is not receiving it. It's very likely every council member has constituents whose children attend there. One of the eight has her certification in Exceptional Needs and was told she would earn the $10,000 if she returned to her role as a special educator, but she wanted to address the needs of the whole school, not only those with IEPs. Her school is in District 3. District 5 boasts three school counselor NBCTs at an eclectic mix of schools. Council members Rodbien and Hummer, I'm sorry to say your districts have no school counselor NBCTs yet, but Mrs. Hummer has me as her constituent. I was the first in the state to achieve certification in 2006. Board of Education members voted 8-0 to support the budget line because they were tired of waiting for the state to do the right thing. If you're in favor of supporting student mental health, recruiting and retaining highly-qualified educators, and career and technical education, then you should be in support of voting for an amendment to restore the $87,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ryan Morris.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the council. My name is Ryan, and I'm here on behalf of Anarundel Library Workers United. I proudly serve in our bargaining team. Tonight, I'm asking your support as we approach the finish line. I work at the information desk at the Severn Branch and often the first point of contact for anyone walking through our doors. My colleagues and I take pride in our work and being reliable, knowledgeable resources for our community, but that's getting harder. Low wages have led to high turnover and understaffing, which directly impacts the level of service that we can provide. Most of our bargaining unit is paid below a living wage in Anarundel County, from library associates to building care technicians. Our libraries run because we show up every day, but it's getting harder to stay. After three years on the job, I earned $19 an hour while trying to put myself through school. I'm in debt and relying on family to make ends meet. I work at a public library, and I need a benefactor for myself. We're not doing this to get rich, just to make one job enough. We're organizing to keep experienced, committed staff in our libraries so our community gets the service it deserves. the service it deserves. And a point of clarification that our CEO made earlier, the 3% COLA that he mentioned is for unrepresented employees. We are now represented by half me, and our wage increases should be similar to other union represented employees in the county and not the nonrepresented employees. Please support a budget that reflects our value and helps us build a stronger library system for everyone. Collective bargaining works. It gives workers a real voice and creates a stronger, more equitable workplace, not just for us, but for communities we serve every day. We're asking for fairness, and we hope you'll stand with us to ensure that these protections are finally secured, and thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Josh Seifried.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Josh Seifried, an Air Force vet and a member of Epping Forest Community. I'm here to address the issues surrounding SCBD, Special Community Benefit Districts, that are impacting our neighborhoods. Let's get right to it. The county is proposing a change to these fees. Now, I want to be clear, I understand the need for these--
Mr. Seifried, I apologize. The hearing tonight is strictly about the annual budget bills.
And isn't this in the--
No, that's a separate piece of legislation.
Oh, then I signed up for this, but, okay. Well, I still think you're wrong on this.
Well, we'll let you go.
I can come back if you want me to.
Come back on Monday night when the hearing for that is, but you're here and you're started. Go ahead.
I'll come back on Monday, it's fine. But I do urge you to look at the social media that's spreading on this issue. There's tens of thousands of views on this. This is not a popular issue. This is something that's going to hurt the communities, and the communities are organizing against this. So I really urge you to look at this before I come back on Monday.
All right. Thank you very much. This, oh, no, wait. We have one more on this panel. My apologies, I almost missed you. Sam Moreland, you're up.
Good evening, members of the county council. My name is Sam Moreland, and I'm here today representing the Southern High School FFA Case Agriculture Science Program. I also serve as the current president of the Southern FFA Chapter. We are requesting your support for a portion of the Anarundel County School Board budget, specifically $70,000 in funding for the three case agriculture science programs within our county. This funding is crucial to ensure our students have access to essential hands-on experimental learning that directly prepares them for a diverse and vital career field in agriculture. Without this funding, our students across the county must dedicate significant time and effort to fundraising activities to support these instructional labs. These programs are important for students, allowing them to grow not just in agriculture industry, but as leaders, having so many opportunities like public speaking events and career development events. Without the proper funding, students are not able to travel to these events to grow and develop their new skills and prepare themselves for careers that they are passionate about. These students have found their passion, who want to make a difference in their community, who want to grow, but just need the help and the materials to do so. For me, this program isn't just another class I'm taking at school or a club for my resume. It's an organization that has really helped me step out of my comfort zone and empowered me to try new things. Four years ago, if you told me I would be the president of this FFA Chapter, I would have told you you were lying. But everything that I've been able to accomplish has allowed me to grow so much. I can confidently say that this organization has been able to allow me to grow so much, and I've been able to watch so many others before me do the same. In conclusion, I respectfully implore you to support Amendment Number 20 and invest in the future of our students. This program benefits students across all academic levels and plays a vital role in cultivating future leaders. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. This panel is dismissed, and I will call the next six names that I have on my list. I have Victoria Corcoran, Tanya Kites, I apologize if I didn't get that right, Stacy Eccles, Kristi Giuliano, and Jane Beard. And if Tom Adams is here, you can come on up as well. Ms. Corcoran, whenever you are ready.
Thank you. I live in the county, and my name is Victoria Corcoran, and I'm a volunteer at St. Luke's Food Pantry, and I'm here on behalf of the Food Bank. The Food Bank is the glue for defeating hunger in the county. They make it possible that these independent food pantries like St. Luke's are able to provide to their neighbors sustenance every week, every month, every year. Having enough to eat is a fundamental need, as we all know, and it should be a fundamental right. And there is no higher duty of government than to make sure that the people that they govern are not living with hunger, and that's what you all have been doing for years by supporting the Food Bank and its mission. That mission is needed now more than ever. For example, at St. Luke's, we are serving 100 households, which is about five or six people in each household. That is double what we were doing last year. And who can only imagine what we're looking forward to next year in that area. But it is the Food Bank that, by supplementing what the individual food pantries have, make it possible. Without it, each individual one could not do it by themselves. Also, the facilities and the staff, staff is amazingly volunteer, and the facilities are provided by the individual groups that are sponsoring the food pantry. So the savings to the taxpayer is phenomenal. I mean, this is a real bargain for the county. I ask you that you, the amount that you have preliminarily approved for the Food Bank, that you fully commit to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Tanya Kites. Did I get it right?
It's Keats.
Keats, shoot. You may begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Tanya Kites. I'm a resident of Pasadena. I'm the vice chair of the Anarundel County Animal Welfare Council and the president of Show Your Soft Side, a nationwide nonprofit run entirely by volunteers with the mission of ending animal abuse and providing support to the most vulnerable in our community. I'm speaking here tonight on behalf of the Animal Welfare Council. Anarundel County needs to fully fund a standalone animal services department, and the AWC supports the proposed budget for this department contained in Bill 33-25. The current animal care and control structure housed within the police department limits the ability to operate with the focus, specialization, and transparency that animal sheltering truly requires. This restructuring is not just symbolic, it's a practical step toward modern, responsive, and accountable services. Importantly, we want to stress that this shift comes with limited budget implications. The infrastructure is already in place. What's needed now is an appropriate budget for a leadership framework and staffing to function independently and effectively. The Animal Welfare Council asks that the county council support the following identified specific staff positions. The two new positions for the restructured Animal Services Department are: Animal Services Director and Management Assistant II of IT and Personnel, and four new staff positions, which are needed even without restructuring; an Animal Care Technician to support nearly 1,500 in-house spay-neuter surgeries and help relaunch no-cost services for low-income pet owners; a Management Aid to improve adoption rates and reduce overcrowding; an Animal Care Attendant I to ensure animals receive proper care seven days a week; and an Office Support Specialist to assist with more than 1,300 bite reports annually, which improves public response and safety. These are not extravagant asks, they are strategic investments that will enable the department to function well and to serve our residents and animals more effectively. We have a real opportunity here to do something meaningful for our county, and it can be done responsibly and affordably. Please support the full $4,958,500 in Bill 33-25 for a standalone animal services department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Stacy Eccles.
Good evening, council members. I'm Stacy Eccles, an ag science teacher and FFA advisor at Southern High School. It's an honor to address you to champion the school board's budget request to support the program of $70,000. I am blessed to work and live in District Seven. With a PhD in agriculture, I have witnessed the urgent need for students trained to grow our food sustainably. Global food demands and skilled agriculturalists is what our program delivers. We teach plant science, animal science, environmental science, including hydroponics and aquaponics. As a parent, I've seen this impact firsthand. My daughter Caitlin graduated from Southern last year. She is currently serving Maryland State FFA as a state officer, and her sister Allison has also honed her leadership skills in my program. She's a current junior. My eight-year-old daughter Lucy, who attends Lothian Elementary, is now exploring agriculture in her third-grade CKLA literature curriculum, showing its reach in K5 education, and these young students are excited to learn about agriculture. This line item funding will begin the transformation of all three case ag programs by upgrading our hydroponic and aquaponic systems and maintaining our greenhouses. These enhancements will expand hands-on learning, prepare students for high-demand careers. Southern's track record within Maryland FFA in the last five years proves our impact. We have had four career development teams who have won state contests, leading to nationals. We've had one student qualify for nationals through employment skills. We've trained two FFA state officers, and Sam was being humble, he is in the running for state officer this current year. These successes build not skills, but confident leaders. The school board unanimously endorsed this funding, recognizing agriculture's educational value. County Executive Pittman championed it on May 2nd, when he specifically called it out before his budget address. Parents and students testifying tonight reflect our community's commitment. This $70,000 will bolster our economy, advance stability, and empower our youth. Please see my written testimony for more details. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Kristi Giuliano.
Hi, my name is Kristi Giuliano, a broadneck high school math teacher at year 30 and on the last step of the salary scale, which stops at year 25, hoping to teach 15 to 20 years more. I'm here to advocate for the 1,000 stipend for 30-plus year and beyond teachers to be added to the AACPS budget request to keep teachers like me in the profession. Senior teachers are vital to the development of newer teachers and conditional teachers who need more support and guidance on what and how to best teach certain standards. Since we don't get a step increase, this 1,000 would help justify equitable pay for all categories on the teacher's salary scale. In addition, I'm advocating for the 1% COLA mid-year for teachers to be added back into the budget request. Health insurance is going up mid-year, as well as rents around the county. My recent rent just went up $200, and my salary increase of 3% would only be $150 a month. Teachers are getting left behind with pay that's still not comparable with inflation. Students graduating college are earning starting salaries close to what I make after 30 years of teaching in fields that aren't even considered higher-paying fields. What is happening? Educators are being left behind. New teachers aren't staying because they see this discrepancy and can't afford to be teachers, so they find other jobs. PG County and Montgomery Counties have raised their teacher pay. I would make $6,000 or $12,000 more in their counties, respectively. Show you value your county educators by adding these two salary enhancements back into the budget, and thank you for your time and consideration. Help us recruit and retain teachers.
Thank you. Next is Jane Beard.
Hello, I'm a resident of Churchton, Maryland, District Seven. I'm here to speak in support of full funding for the Family Protection Initiative on behalf of CANDAL, the Community Action Network for Democracy, Liberties, and Equality. This initiative provides vital services to families who are faced with unexpected and often unwarranted detentions and removals from their loved ones and communities. We have been partnering with the county's Office of Multicultural Affairs, so we have seen firsthand how hard they work to be able to marshal the resources to help these families survive these disruptions and resume being productive members of their community. If you fully fund this, as we believe you should, you will be able to take a comprehensive instead of ad hoc approach to this work, and that means that we'll be able to help immigrants receive due process. The data is clear. Immigrants who are detained are four times more likely to return home to their families and their jobs when they get legal assistance. It will help families stabilize economically. One and sometimes more breadwinners are suddenly taken without warning from their families. It will help families stabilize emotionally. Kids are in school with this huge crisis, and they have emotional, cognitive, and behavioral consequences that accrue not just to them, but to the teachers and to the entire classroom. If you fully fund this, as we believe you should, you will help mitigate the burden that the broader Anarundel County community will bear without it. Businesses, small businesses that many of us depend on, require these people, count on these people, and are benefited by these people, and it is up to us as citizens to help our neighbors in this moment. Please fully support the Family Protection Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Adams.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the council. My name is Tom Adams. I'm one of the grathes at St. Luke's Food Pantry. Remember, we're living in a time where people are thinking of government as either ephemeral or irrelevant. There are those that want to eliminate government in every way. Remember Grover Norquist, the author of Proposition 13 in California, used to say that we can, we need to shrink government to a size where we can drown it in the bath. So I hope we're beyond that now. We are now at a time that the need of the poor is advancing on us in very strong ways. And I would like to quote from the prophet by Calale Gibran, where he says, "Then said the rich man, 'Speak to us of giving.' And he answered, 'You give but little when you give of your possessions; it is when you give of yourself that you truly give. For what are your possessions but things to keep on guard for fear you may need them tomorrow? And tomorrow, what shall tomorrow bring to the overburdened dog burying bones in the trackless sand as he follows the pilgrims to the holy city?'" I'm thinking with this that we are giving of ourselves as much as we can to distribute these very needed aid, and thank you.
Thank you very much. This panel is dismissed, and at this time, I have no more names on my list, but if there is anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak, you may come and take any of the six seats at these tables, and we will be happy to hear from you. Last chance, no takers? All right. Well, seeing that there is no movement in the audience, the public hearing on the proposed FY 26 budget is now closed. Thank you all for being here tonight. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until May 15, 2025, at 9:00 a.m., when we will, oh, excuse me, oh, yeah, May 15, I got that date right, May 15, 2025, at 9:00 a.m., when we will meet virtually to continue with our department budget presentations. Remember to check the county website for important information and updates on our meetings. Have a good night, everyone.